Good evening, everybody, and thanks for joining us tonight on the snowy or rainy, depending on where you are. Evening. Definitely appreciate you taking the time out for to join us for the Eagle Enforcement Action against FCA. Or Stellantis for the informational session and public hearing. So before we jump into tonight's program, we just want to cover some quick housekeeping items. So first off, I want everybody to note that all lines are going to be muted for the evening. And we are going to be recording this session. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to tonight's moderator, Jennifer Dixon, who will be telling you how tonight will be running. Go ahead, Jennifer, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Caitlin. Appreciate you. Yeah, it is, it was snowing here, and then it was like big snowing, and now it's raining. So I know everybody's kind of experiencing something different. I got some pictures from the west side of the state where there was a little bit more snow over there. So who knows? Hopefully, you're warm and inside. So a little bit about how things are going to work tonight, there's kind of two distinct parts of the evening. We have the informational session, like Caitlin mentioned, and then that will be followed by a public hearing. So for the informational session, we have some other air quality division staff that are going to be on and giving a short presentation about this enforcement action, a little bit about air quality division, and you know what enforcement kind of means. We'll learn a little bit more about the compliance history of this part of the Stellantis Detroit Assembly Complex. So this is the J-NAP plant that we're talking about specifically tonight. After that short presentation, we'll open it up for question and answer. So like Caitlin mentioned, your lines are going to be muted during the presentation, but once we get to that question and answer, part of the evening, you can decide to answer, ask your questions in a few different ways, and I'll talk about that in just a second. So after we get done with the informational session and the question and answer period, we'll move right into the public hearing part of the night. So we'll start that at seven o'clock, or when we've gotten through all of the air quality related questions that we have for tonight. So whatever comes first, sometimes we don't get to all of the questions because we are going to try to start that public hearing at seven o'clock, just to be respectful of everyone's time tonight. So during the hearing portion, there's not give and take between our staff and folks that are participating in the meeting today. But we will be listening to any comments that you would like to enter tonight on this enforcement action. We'll talk a little bit more about that part later, but I just always want to kind of lay out that there's these two sort of distinctive sections of the evening. So getting to how you will be able to ask your questions, there's a few different ways that you can do this. A lot of people like to put their questions in the question and answer box. We're more than happy to have you do that. Sometimes it's easier to put them in while the conversation's going on. We're also happy to have you ask your questions verbally, so you can use that raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. Or if you're calling in, it's going to be pound two on your phone, so that will sort of virtually raise your hand so that we can unmute your line, and then you'll be able to ask your question verbally as well. So either way, we don't really care what way you want to do it, but if you have a question, we hope that you'll answer or ask it this evening. All right, so before we get into talking about the agenda, I do want to introduce the decision maker for this, for tonight's action, and that is Annette Switzer. So Annette, I know you wanted to kind of officially welcome everybody to the meeting tonight, so once you're ready to go, just go ahead and take it away.
Thanks, Jen. I wanted to thank all of you and appreciate the time that you're taking to meet with us tonight, to ask your questions and to share your thoughts and comments about this enforcement action. As Jen said, I'm Annette Switzer, air quality division director, and I'm also the decision maker for this action. What that means is that I'll be listening closely to the conversation tonight, so that when the comment period closes, I have the information I need to make my final decision. Tonight, you're going to hear more from all of the staff that have joined us tonight about the work that we have been doing related to the compliance and enforcement at the facility, as well as details contained within the draft order. We will talk about what types of comments we can and cannot use in our decisions. And I will be here for the remainder of the meeting. I encourage you to ask questions and submit comments if you'd like to. Talking with community members like all of you is an essential part of our process. Thank you all for being here, and Jen, I'll pass it back to you so we can get on with the rest of the conversation.
Yeah, thanks a lot. I appreciate that, Annette. I want to just really quickly introduce the other staff that we have on with us tonight. So if you guys could just turn your cameras on really quick, and you're going to want to probably unmute yourself just so people can see you. So you're going to be primarily hearing from Erin Moran. She is our enforcement specialist on this action. She's going to talk with you in just a couple of minutes. And then Bob Burns is the inspector for this facility, and he's also our Lansing District Supervisor. So you'll be hearing from him a little bit more as well. And then we do have a couple of folks helping out in the background. You already met Caitlin DeVries, so we're really always happy to have her on supporting us and getting the virtual meeting going, and then Jim Ostrowski might be helping in the background as well a little bit. So thanks, everybody, for turning your cameras on for a second. Erin, if you want to leave yours on, go ahead, because I'm going to pass it over to you in just a minute. But if the rest of you want to turn yours off, that's totally fine. All right, so I kind of already talked about this, but just to lay it out for tonight, we already met everybody, so that's great. We're already following the agenda. We do have the information session first. Like I said, you're going to hear from Erin and Bob a little bit about the proposed enforcement action, some of the compliance related items as well. We'll get right into that question and answer portion of the night, followed by the public hearing. So remember that public hearing will start at seven o'clock, or when we're done going through the air quality related questions that we might get. We will also talk about how you can submit an official comment. So I always want to just let people know that if you're not ready to do that tonight, you don't have to. There's no pressure. You can always submit a comment after this meeting, and the comment period is going to stay open until January 23rd. So you have a little bit of time afterwards. Hopefully, if this is kind of your first foray into this action and you're looking to get more information, we'll talk about how you can do that after we get done with the hearing portion. We'll also talk really briefly about where you can find other information if you want to dive a little bit deeper. Our staff are always happy to help answer any questions that you might have as well. So if we don't get to them tonight, they're always, you know, happy to have one-on-one conversations or via email, whatever is easiest for you. So and then we'll, of course, tell you how to get ahold of them. So that's going to kind of close everything out for the night. Hopefully, we'll have a nice conversation and we'll get things rolling here. I'm going to pass it over to Erin. So Erin, I'm going to man the slides for you, so if I don't advance when you need me to, just let me know, all right?
That's good. Thanks, Jen. Hi, everyone. Thanks for joining tonight again. As Jen said, my name is Erin Moran, and I am the enforcement specialist who worked on this case with Stellantis. So I'm going to start with an overview of the air quality division and enforcement process. Then after that, I'm going to go into the proposed consent order and the enforcement action that we're discussing tonight against Stellantis. So the Air Quality Division, or AQD for short, regulates sources of air pollutants to protect human health and the environment. The AQD has the authority to regulate stationary industrial sources, which we also call regulated facilities. The AQD has many different roles in regulating air quality, and one of our primary roles is to conduct inspections of these regulated facilities to make sure that they're following the air quality rules and regulations during their operations. So enforcement falls under the compliance umbrella, and we, myself and the other folks in my unit, work closely with the AQD district staff that inspected the regulated facilities. So this slide just kind of gives a visual overview of the enforcement process from the beginning, when a violation is found, until the end, when we issue a consent order. So an inspection can include a physical inspection, where a district staff actually go to a facility and look around, make sure, you know, everything looks good, and they're following the air quality rules and regulations. We can also request records for review, and then we also complete inspections because of any complaints that we receive. So if a violation is found, after any of these sort of inspections, we send what's called a violation notice. And so after we send that, the company we sent it to has an opportunity to respond to say how they fixed or how they're going to fix the violations. So if we then decide that the violation should be escalated to enforcement, the district staff then write an enforcement referral, and they'll send that to me or whoever else in the enforcement unit is working with that facility. Once we receive that, we send an enforcement notice to the company to request an initial meeting. An enforcement notice lets the company know that they will have to resolve the violations through the legal process. Usually, it's through a document called a consent order, which I will describe a bit later. During this process, we have discussions with the company about what the plan will be to resolve these violations. Once we reach an agreement, then we are required to hold a public notice and comment period. That's where we are right now in the process. So during this time, as Jen described, you know, people can submit comments on the consent order. And this time period lasts for a minimum of thirty days. We hold a hearing if requested, or also in the case of a, in a high-profile case, such as this one for Stellantis. So after the public notice and comment period is over, AQD addresses all the substantive comments that we receive related to the consent order. At this point, if there is demand from the public on an item in the consent order that AQD is able to change, we may go back to the company and propose changes to the consent order. If there are no changes, or we agree on the changes, then both the company and AQD sign the consent order. And at this point, the company is legally required to complete the requirements of the consent order. So just to get into a bit more about the enforcement process, escalated enforcement is the legal process that we use to resolve violations that were cited and then sent to enforcement. And we resolve these through what is called an administrative consent order. So I'll probably say consent order, because that's a bit shorter. But administrative consent order is, as it says in the name, an administrative settlement. We are legally required to offer this to a company in enforcement before we consider sending the violations to the Department of Attorney General or to the Environmental Protection Agency to resolve. A consent order always includes a compliance plan, a monetary fine or penalty, and also stipulated fines. Most violations that are escalated to enforcement are resolved through a consent order. So now moving on to discuss the current settlement with Stellantis. At the Jefferson North Assembly Plant, you may also hear us say J-NAP. It's a bit shorter, less of a mouthful. But in this case, there was one violation. Stellantis exceeded the volatile organic compound, or VOC emission limit of four point eight pounds of VOC per job over a twelve-month ruling time period at their paint shops. So pounds per job means the maximum pounds of VOC that can be emitted per vehicle that is painted. And then a twelve-month ruling time period includes data from the past twelve months when you're looking at that data point. So in this case, Stellantis was out of compliance with this emission limit from September of 2022 through September of 2023. So this slide outlines a summary of Stellantis's proposed consent order. So under this consent order, Stellantis is required to comply with the emission limit of four point eight pounds of VOC per job by March 1st of this year, and they'll also be paying a fine of eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So after this consent order is signed and issued, in the case that AQD fines violations of this consent order, it's possible that Stellantis could pay stipulated fines for those violations, and they may also be required to submit an admission mitigation plan to the AQD for review and approval. So to give a bit more detail about this emission mitigation plan, at all times, you know, of the year, past, present, and during the, you know, length of time of the consent order, Stellantis is required to submit quarterly records to the AQD for review. And this includes records which include the data that shows the pounds of VOC per job that is being emitted at the paint shops. So if we review this quarterly data for this emission limit, and it appears that the emissions are trending in the wrong direction, then Stellantis will be required to submit this emission mitigation plan to AQD for review and approval. This plan must include the reason for increased emissions, the actions Stellantis has taken or will take to reduce emissions, and also the Stellantis staff responsible for carrying out this plan. So by reviewing the quarterly data and requiring an emission mitigation plan in the case that we see VOC emissions increasing and not necessarily going over that limit, this lets the AQD be proactive in making sure that Stellantis is taking the appropriate steps to stay in compliance with this emission limit. So the last slide for me tonight goes over how AQD calculated the monetary fine. We also call it a penalty, kind of interchange those words in this enforcement action. So as I mentioned a previous slide, the monetary penalty that Stellantis will pay is eighty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars. So in every enforcement case, we use the Environmental Protection Agency EPA's penalty policy to calculate the fines that are required in the consent order. So this policy lays out what the fine amount should be for each separate violation, and then those amounts are added up. There is a few adjustments in that policy as well. The policy considers different factors in the calculation depending on like what type of violations happened. So in this case, there was one emission limit violation that lasted for around one year. So the specific penalty calculation took into account how far over the emission limit they were, how long this violation lasted, the fact that during the time that the violation happened, the area was in a non-attainment area for ozone, and it also took into account the size of the company as a whole. So that is my last slide about this enforcement action for Stellantis, so I will turn it back over to Jen for question and answers.
Thanks, Erin. Appreciate that. So just to let you know, I know sometimes we talk longer than that. That was a kind of a concise presentation, so hitting the high points of the proposed action. So we're happy to move into question and answer now. Bob, if you want to turn your camera on too, in case any questions come in for you. Like I mentioned before, if you would like to put your questions in the question box, you can do that. If you're calling in, you can press that pound two on your phone to raise your hand. I see somebody already did that, so that's awesome. I think I know who it is, maybe. And you can also raise your hand using the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. So give me one second here, and I will get right to you. So what I'm going to do for folks that have called in on the phone, so thanks for doing that. I'm going to say the last four digits of your phone number to let you know that that's who I'm going to be going to. Sometimes I know I don't know my own phone number, so if you should, I think it does give you a clue. But so this person, the last four digits are one, five, zero, three. So if your last four digits are one, five, zero, three, go ahead and ask your question.
Yes, I was wondering, are we going to be expecting Stellantis for the corporation?
I'm sorry, can you explain a little bit more what you mean?
Right, far as what y'all was explaining about the air force, basically, we have to expect and monitor everything and write reports in order for us to get understanding about the counts and everything.
So I think maybe you're asking about the records that they have to submit. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, Bob, if you, could you talk a little bit more about what records exactly they have to commit, commit, submit? And just really quickly, before we move on, there was a question, just to reiterate, what are volatile organic compounds or VOCs? So that's the pollutant that we're talking about that was, had the emissions exceeded. So someone had asked that, what are volatile organic compounds? So I just wanted to make sure we're clear on that as well. So yeah, Bob, if you can talk a little bit more about those volatile organic compound records that we require the company to submit, I think that would be helpful.
Sure, thanks, Jen. Volatile organic compounds are those which volatiles into the air, and they are very commonly found in the solvents which are in paint. So it could be things like acetone or xylene, which are the materials which get transferred onto the car. You transfer paint solids to the car, and those VOCs are the transfer media which then evaporate into the air. So it's a commonly could be associated with painting operations. As far as the reporting goes, the company is required to submit quarterly emission records to the state of Michigan. And so those include VOC, volatile organic compound, emission records for all of the emission units at the plant, and also including other emissions such as NOx and CO for combustion sources.
So Bob, I don't want to interrupt you, but you said a couple of things that I think we probably need to explain, emission units. So when we talk about emission units, we're talking about the painting equipment, things like that that are associated with the company doing the painting. That's just a way that we use to describe them, but essentially, paint booths, spray guns, things like that, that release those volatiles into the air. And then you talked about two other pollutants, so two other different air pollutants, NOx, which is oxides of nitrogen. So that's also another air pollutant, and then CO, which is carbon monoxide. So I just want to make sure we're staying away from the acronyms if we can, and I know it's a kind of a, a lot of records that they have to submit to us, so I just wanted to make sure that we're pausing for a second to explain a couple of those things.
Sure. Yep, and so those records are submitted to us again on a quarterly basis. The NOx and CO are things that are typical of like natural gas combustion in the cure ovens for the painting operation. So very similar to an oven at home, it heats up and cures the coating so that it's a finished product on the vehicle.
Yeah, and it's, I think it's interesting when we talk about volatile organic compounds. I think you did a nice job explaining what they are. What I, what I think about when I'm talking to like people about it is, I think, you know, think about, you mentioned solvents, but you also think about, and this isn't at the facility, but to think about what a VOC is, like gasoline. You know how gasoline, when it's exposed to the air, it evaporates? That's what happens with volatile organic compounds, a similar kind of thing. And there's a lot of different kinds of volatile organic compounds in a painting operation like the one at J-NAP, which is why we have to really pay a lot of attention to it and why they have so many records, because it's something that we want to make sure we stay on top of. Had a quick question in the question and answer box. It was, will the slide presentations and analysis be available to attendees afterwards to share with community members? So yes, definitely. We'll talk about where you can find more information if you want to dig deeper into this. We'll also share these slides out to everybody who attended this meeting. And if you have an email address, if you called in and you have an email address, we'll give you our phone number in our emails so that you can let us know that you'd like to receive that information as well. So I have another person on the phone here, and the last four digits are zero, nine, seven, nine. So if your last four digits are zero, nine, seven, nine, go ahead and ask your question. Be ready. Sorry, go ahead. I apologize.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. You sound great.
Okay, I stay over in the community. I stay the street over. We inhaled a lot of fumes when you guys were selling tests. The state had fined you, Chrysler, over a hundred thousand dollars for failing tests it. But they never gave us none of the money. We was never compensated. We've been inhaling this stuff. Okay, they done fixed it now, but what about all the fumes we've been inhaling before they got to the point where they fixed this film? We got all this in our system. We have runny eyes. We have dry throats that we inhaled all this stuff, and nobody conversated. I would go down to the city council every week, and I was complaining, and you guys supposed to had came down there a while back. You cancel, then you supposed to came another time. So I hear a lot of this talk that you guys are saying, but nobody conversate us, and we the next street over, right behind the plant. And nobody conversated us, no nothing, for inhaling these fumes all this time. People over here is sick. People over here have oxygen. We got seniors over here. We got, people got different sickness, illness, and nobody never conversated us. We, we went at the mayor. We talked to the city council folk. I've been complaining for the longest since they built. I came to the, to the forum every time you guys had it before you built it. And we were trying to get some understanding about this here, and then they put it up, and we done got sick, people done got sick from over here. We done call EGO and everything, but we hear what you saying, but we never got convert, conversate for the problems that we dealing with now that will be with us as a senior that we dealing with. So what, what are you guys going to do for us? We thought maybe, some of us thought, everybody might not wanted it, but we thought y'all would have bought the street out so we wouldn't have to deal with this method. This the problem we have over here. And sometimes we still can smell certain film. Okay, they say it, it won't affect the body, but everybody's body not the same, just like everybody can't take certain kind of medicine. Everybody can't inhale certain film, you know, that's coming from that plant. And it's sad that we have to live like that, because they forced this plant down our throat. You know what I'm saying? And made it an industrial place over here when it was a resident. They added on all this, and it's sad that we have to live like this. I think some of them, they should conversate us for what we dealing with and inhaling these fumes over the period of time that we deal with it before you guys got to the point where you said it's fixed now. Because you done fell the test so many times. I, I been on it. I've been out in city calling. I've been dealing with the ego and everybody else. And it's sad that we have to inhale this, you know, in us over here on the east side. It's like they don't care. They just want to make their money, and you guys making billions of dollars. We should have got conversated. Well, we should have got where we can fix our house up. They gave us a little, some thousand, to put a roof on our house. But what about the furnace and the windows and the doors that we need to fix? Nobody conversated us, because that crease through our house. When we go to sleep at night, that comes in our house. We inhaling that through, through our furnace and stuff. So that's one of my, that's my comment, is are you guys going to conversate us for the problems that we dealing with now and go continue to deal with from the films? Can anybody answer that?
No, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to speak over you, but I just wanted to make sure that you understand this part of the evening is not the comment period. I do think that it would be great if you wanted to hold on until we get to that, and you definitely can make that comment again. And just to let you know, the folks that are here talking tonight, we are from the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. We're not from the company. The company may be online listening in. Hopefully, they are. Hopefully, they're hearing what you are saying. I think you have some very valid points. I think there's one thing that we could talk about. It's probably not going to be in response to some of your concerns and some of the things that you've brought up this evening. But we can talk a little bit about, you know, what happens to the fine that the company will have to pay to the state of Michigan. Again, I don't think it's going to make you happier, but I would like to just talk about where that money goes, just so that there's a clear understanding that that money does not go back to the community, unfortunately.
And that's, that's, and that's, I'm sorry for cutting you off, but that's the sad part about it. It don't go back to the people that, that's getting hurt by the films and stuff, which is sad, which is true, you know, and that's a problem that I have.
And it's interesting, because, oops, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A lot of us that want, will want to move, can't afford to move, because you'll have to take on a big old house note when a lot of our houses over here is paid for.
Yeah, no, I think it would be, it's probably a good idea to, you know, enter that in as a comment. That comment probably won't necessarily change what's in the consent order, but I think it's really helpful that you voiced your concerns at this meeting tonight. Like I said, we're, you know, we're from the state agency, so it's a little bit different. But I do want to, if you don't mind, I'd like to have Erin be able to talk a little bit about where that penalty money goes. Is that okay?
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Thank you for bringing all that to our attention. You know, we do appreciate it. And Erin, if you don't mind, just kind of talking about, you know, how the, the fine works and where that money goes, I think that could be helpful for folks. you know, how the the fine works and and where that money goes, I think that could be helpful for folks too.
Sure, so earlier in the presentation, I kind of went through how we uh calculate the penalty and how we use uh EPA's penalty policy. That is standard for every case that comes through escalated enforcement. That's what we use to calculate each penalty. According to, you know, the rules and regulations for the state of Michigan, it is um part of the Michigan Management and Budget Act. So monetary fine, so the penalty that Stellantis will have to pay, um it's required to go to the state of Michigan General Fund. Um and that is, you know, standard for every enforcement action, um you know, that we go through. Uh sometimes um there is a possibility that money could go to the community, um but it has to be through what is called a supplemental environmental project. Um you know, these are uh environmental or public health projects that company volunteers to do as part of an enforcement action. So um in those certain cases, um some of you online might be familiar with some of the other supplemental environmental projects um that have uh maybe occurred in the community. Um but, you know, like I said, it's a voluntary project that the company can choose to do or choose not to do. And we cannot, you know, require a company to do that. So in this enforcement action, Stellantis did not choose to uh complete a supplemental environmental project.
Yeah, which, you know, uh we want to just be very transparent about that, and we know that that can be kind of a frustrating part of how this enforcement process works. So I think it's just important to talk about it. So thank you for talking about that, Erin. I know we often get a lot of questions in that regard. Um I have one other person on the phone with their hand up, but there's a few questions that have come in that are a little bit out of the scope of this meeting and not necessarily things that we can um respond to. We we're just not the right people, or it's not, we're not the right agency. But I want to acknowledge the questions too. Um so one of the questions was, um are there any physical autopsy reports that included to bring the validity to? Sorry, I can't talk tonight, bring validity to the perils of this region. So that would be something that our state health department might be able to respond to. It wouldn't be something that would be something that Eagle would do. Um another question came in, are there any vouchers for household preventative measures to health hazards? I don't know if there's a city program for something like that, but again, it's a little bit out of the scope of our work here at Eagle. So I want to make sure that, you know, I just acknowledge that those questions came in and that they're a little bit out of our um out of our scope. So um all right, I'm gonna go to the phone here a minute. So this um I'm gonna just unmute you here, and it's Marv- Marvis Kofield. Sorry, Marvis, if you want to go ahead and ask your question whenever you're ready. And you might have to unmute yourself, so.
Okay.
There you go. Nope, I I hear you now, sounds great, thank you.
Oh yeah, what's your name again?
My my name's Jennifer, nice to meet you.
But Jennifer, I just want to say Happy New Year to you all and uh the efforts that we are listening to to make sure that we, when I say we the community are able to hear what type of uh if compliance or not in compliance per the corporation, but at the same time, to be able to have comments when it's time to speak on if they felt that we the community have not been treated fairly. But I would just want to say again that I'm glad that we have you all from the state for the city reacting and responding and making sure that Stellantis is being in compliance as it relates to uh pollutants and making sure that everyone understands that it's that you all are very transparent. But I'm very pleased to say, from my experiences and knowing community people and being connected to Stellantis, I'm glad that we are working together, because I appreciate having a industry, a building, a business that have employed thousands of people and see the need to make sure that people can raise their children and give them a good opportunity for education and just to be able to feel good about themselves financially. But at the same time, it still takes the village for us to be able to make sure that we all are helping each other and make sure, not just for for prosperity, but prosperity in the sense of being here later on in life. So thank you for understanding the importance of making sure that we are all working together for the betterment of the community, the family, as well as the village.
Yeah, no problem, Marvis. Do you, did you have a question for for us, or are you okay if I move on to the next person?
Um I my question was, I'm glad that we have a quarterly system that we can hold. Are you all uh in, I would say, responsible to make sure that Stellantis is responding to some of the the challenges and issues, and when it come down to pollutants and the certain gases that need to be made sure that they're in compliance. So I was just saying, my, I was more about a comment and the question to make sure that we continuously stay and be uh vigilant for the community's sake, as well as for the people who will be coming after uh you all are not here.
No, well, thank you for that. I I do appreciate you saying all those nice words for us. Much appreciated. I'm gonna move on to uh Derek White, Derek. All right, so this question was, it's a little bit again out of our scope, but I want to make sure that I acknowledge it. Um it says, do these analyses take into consideration the damage from COVID increases or the effects of these chemicals on the entire region? So because this is an enforcement action, again, it's a little bit outside of our scope of this. Some some of these kinds of things do happen when a permit application comes in, but that's a little bit outside of the scope of this, Rhonda. So I just want to acknowledge your question, I appreciate that. Um but again, it's a little bit out of what we're doing here um from an enforcement perspective. Um all right. Okay, so I'm gonna just paraphrase a few of these things that are coming in. Um there is, and some of these might be good comments to make, and maybe, you know, i- it's something that we can pass forward. So just making sure that there are goals and protocols with EPA. So we do work really closely with EPA and with EPA's enforcement section on a lot of these cases, not necessarily this one, but a lot of other ones we do. So we do definitely, you know, talk with them about enforcement cases that we have here, and they help us out with ones that we aren't able to resolve on our own. Um so we're definitely doing that, we do try to align a lot of that, which is why we use their policy and and procedure for figuring out what the penalties are gonna be. Um so the um State General Fund, the this is a question for you, Erin. I don't know if you know this specifically, but the question was, what does the State General Fund monies go to? Like where do they, do they go back to air quality related things? Do they just go in the general fund and someone else decides how to use them? You know, I I know that's a, it's a little bit of a nebulous thing, and that's, you know, one of the frustrations that I think we sometimes hear from communities and even, you know, from ourselves. I don't know if you have anything else you can add as far as like fund usage, as far as that goes?
I don't think I do, unfortunately, you know, I think as far as I personally understand, the state of Michigan General Fund is used for a lot of different things, but I'm not sure how that money is allocated, um who allocates that money and where it goes.
And we can look into that, I think, and and get back to you, definitely. It's just not something that's within our knowledge here. But we can definitely look into that and get back to you. Um all right, so I think, so this uh caller is last four digits one five oh three again, so hold on one second and I'll unmute you. All right, did you have a follow-up question or or a question for us?
Yes, I have a question, because I'm confused, I'm not sure if it's a meeting for anyone to be hired in, or, you know.
Oh, no. No, this isn't a meeting for anybody to be hired in, no, definitely not. Did you have? Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, I talked over you, I apologize.
I was asking, did y'all have any openings for uh transport?
Uh no, we're, this is the state agency, so we don't have, I mean, we have a lot of openings, but you'd have to go through our NeoGov uh website to look, see those and a- apply for them. But this is, we aren't, this isn't a hiring discussion tonight, I'm sorry.
Okay, because I thought this was a meeting for um an interview.
Nope, not, nope, not tonight, sorry.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate you guys inviting me in.
Yeah, no problem.
Got it.
Okay, all right, just looking at our question and answer box here, making sure that I'm not missing anything. Okay. All right, so this is an interesting question, how do organize organizations get involved with further research opportunities? So um I know there's a lot of different organizations in the Detroit area that do things like this. Again, you know, because we're a state agency, we don't necessarily, you know, do that type of work. Our work is a little bit more regulatorily focused. But there are a lot of advocacy agencies, environmental advocates in that side of the state that do that kind of work. Um I think I probably just Google that, I mean, I could name some, I can send you a list later. I I'll I'll have your email address, um Rhonda, so I could definitely send you a list of the ones that we know about if you wanted to reach out to folks for sure. Okay. Um oh, this is a good question, so Bob, this one is gonna be for you. The question is, how much greater than four point eight were the emissions that caused a violation? So can you talk just a little bit more about the specifics in the violation notices that you had going on?
Yeah, sure, Jen. Um so the emission limit uh being at four point eight uh, four point eight pounds per job was originally exceeded in September of twenty twenty-two. That value at that time, uh I believe it had reached five point zero one pounds per job. Um now, over the course of the time, that number did um trend up slightly. I believe it may have hit, uh don't quote me on this number, a a high is maybe about five and a half pounds per job um before it again began sort of trending back down where they became back into compliance again. So it's um between the five and the five point five um for that period of time.
Okay. All right, just checking for other questions, thanks for going over that. Um give folks uh just another minute to get any other questions in. Um yep, hold on one second. All right, Carol, hold on one second, there you go, you should be able to go ahead and ask your question.
Okay, thank you for the time. Um I'll just introduce myself briefly, I'm Carol from the Detroit News.
Yeah, thanks for doing that, appreciate it.
Um could someone explain why Eagle regulates on a per job basis? And then also, for that twelve month rolling period, was the plant, like how much did they emit overall? And were their overall emissions in violation of the air permit?
Yeah, those are good questions. I think um I'll let Bob handle those, they're they're definitely very distinct. So Bob, if you let me know if you want, or you let Carol know if you want her to repeat one or the other, but go ahead and and tackle those if you don't mind.
Yeah, so there there are basically two VOC uh limits for the facility. One is a shorter term type of limit, which is the four point eight pounds per job. Um the other one is a facility-wide limit of a thousand and eighty-five tons per year. Um and that limit was never exceeded. In fact, that number um initially was around four hundred tons. So they've been well below that limit um on the long-term basis, it's just been the short-term limit that they've exceeded.
So the other question was um about what I guess, yeah, on the pounds per job, like what does that have to do with, or why, maybe why would we have the one big overall limit and then the smaller limit, you know, the more like short-term kind of limit, and then the long-term sort of limit?
Um i- it's just, you know, that's how the permit was drafted. So the four point eight pound per job is protect protective of, like, if you're in a low production scenario, we want to make sure that they're painting a car efficiently and having low emissions on a per job basis. The ton per year value is a long-term outlook that we wouldn't want them to exceed the thousand and eighty-five. Now, you know, to talk a little bit more about a pound per job, is productions lower, uh you still have to clean the paint booths and things. So it it becomes more challenging to meet the four point eight pound per job limit. And um some, you know, various parts shortages, computer chips, you know, made that challenging for them in September twenty-two and into the beginning, beginning of twenty twenty-three. Um on the flip side, you know, having less car production means that that overall mass emissions from the facility were quite a bit lower than a thousand tons. So, I mean, they even dropped, I think, as low as three hundred and fifty tons a year, um probably which is half of some of the historical values. Um so it's, you know, it's kind of a give and take from the short-term and the long-term. Um but they're both protective standards uh in the permit. Does that help?
Oh, sorry, Bob, I didn't mean to talk over you. Go ahead, Carol, was that helpful?
It does, but so essentially you're saying that the the per job limit is just to ensure that the the plant continues to be efficient and careful, even if they're not really in danger of violating an overall limit.
Right, or they're not painting a lot of cars, a lot of times is what happens. And and it's not, i- it's very typical for a company who does painting like this to have several different ways that they have to measure their volatile organic compounds, or maybe a specific volatile organic compound. That's very normal to see those kinds of things, sometimes you'll see it like a daily limit, a a rolling limit. So this is just how this permit happens to have been drafted or written, I guess. Um but it's not uncommon. So I think you're you more likely to see those kind of different short-term and long-term limits than you are to only see one overall limit.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Um we had another question here that came in, and it's, what actions or changes is Stellantis required to undertake to ensure it maintains compliance under the order? So we talked about this a little bit, Erin, with the, like, you have, they have to have a compliance plan, and they, you know, they have to follow these certain things, and then they have to have the emission mitigation plan if they start to, you know, creep up there. That's just another one of those checks and balances that we have in. But is there any other actions or things specifically that the company is doing in response to this, Bob, that you could talk to, or Erin, that you could talk to that maybe we didn't cover yet? I'm not sure if there is, but if there is, if you guys wouldn't mind talking through that a little bit.
I guess I would just say, you know, the compliance plan, um there's really two main points of the compliance plan. It is um, you know, comply with that four point eight pounds of VOC per job emission limit. And then, as Jen said, if we see the emissions trending upwards, they have to submit that emission mitigation plan um to, you know, look at their processes and do what they can to make sure that they stay under um that emission limit. And all those things, uh you know, should be outlined in that plan if it um, you know, comes to it that they need to submit that plan.
Did you want to add anything, Bob? Nope, you don't need to, if you don't have anything, but I just want to make sure I give you an opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they've done uh several different things to make improvements at the plant, to bring the number back down. And you know, to me, I think the key part about the consent order is, um you know, they're actually back into compliance with the limit right now. Um but the preventative measure in the consent order now is that even if they're under the four point eight, if there's a corridor period, three months, which trends over above that four point eight, um we're requiring them to notify us and begin a second uh emission mitigation plan. So we're trying to be upfront and preventative of this reoccurring in the future by having this quarterly check-in, uh if they begin to trend over the four point eight pound per job limit.
So yeah, let us know if you have any follow-ups for that, but thanks for kind of walking through that. I know the compliance plan can sometimes, sometimes they're very straightforward, sometimes they can have a lot of details in them, a lot of different things that they have to do. So just want to give folks a little bit more time to ask any questions that they might have. We've got about nine more minutes before seven, so we definitely have time for a few more questions if folks have them. So the question came in, is there any other penalties that we So the question came in, is there any other penalties that we could enforce or sanctions or suspending their license or anything like that that we could um enact against Stellantis if they continue to violate things like that? So I know we talked a little bit about the, what we call stipulated penalties, but it's basically penalties if future violations occur. So that's one of the tools that we have in our toolbox. Um, one of the other things that we can do is, you know, as Erin talked about earlier, the consent order um and the compliance plan and all the things that go along with it, the things that we're talking about tonight. If it goes forward, that's going to be the, you know, the mechanism that we resolves a violation. Doesn't mean that they go away. It just means that's their mechanism for moving forward. Um, so what happens then is if there are other violations, we could write other violation notices. We could start another enforcement process like this, you know, it it does sometimes take a little bit to do, but that those are some of the tools that we have in our toolbox. Erin, I know there's probably other ones that I'm missing. I don't know if there's anything else that you would want to mention as far as, you know, we don't really have the ability to sanction the company or suspend their license. But what other tools do we have that I might have missed in thinking about um any future violations that might occur?
Yeah, I mean, I think you summed that up pretty well. I think that's what, you know, I would have said as well. Um, you know, the main component in the consent order itself is those stipulated fines um that we can demand from Stellantis if we find a violation of the consent order um after it's signed. So enforcing that is really the main uh mechanism here. If we find more violations, we can always take another enforcement action. And um yes, we don't have the authority to uh shut down a company. There's very limited circumstances in which we would be able to consider a situation like that.
Yep, yeah, thanks for talking that through. Um, I've got a call, uh, a caller, not a caller. I have somebody who would like to ask a question. So Crystal, if you would like to ask a question, go ahead whenever you're ready. You probably have to unmute yourself. Now we'll be able to hear you. Give it one more try there. I get to talk to Crystal on Zoom so many times. I know that her her Zoom platform works. There you go. Now I'll be able to hear you, I think.
Yes, thank you.
There you go.
Can can you speak to um where the the where the uh VOCs are measured and how this could possibly relate or not relate to odors in the neighborhood?
Yeah, good question, Crystal. Thanks for bringing that up. Bob, do you want to take that one? You got to unmute yourself though first before you start talking and then we'll be able to hear you. I know we should be used to this by now, but sometimes we're not.
Yeah, Zoom's a little different. I'm more used to Teams, but yeah, so they they've measured um a couple of things, revalidated or reverified. Um, the performance of the concentrator and the thermal oxidizers on the top coat booths. They also
So can you talk about what a concentrator and what a thermal oxidizer is? I don't want to, you know, derail your conversation, but I think that's important.
Sure. So the concentrator um takes VOCs and it simply concentrates it into more of a, like a fuel grade type airstream, something like natural gas, right? And then the oxidizer combusts the paint fumes, uh, so it eliminates them so that you don't notice or smell them. Um, and so those um two units uh associated with the top coat lines have been retested and revalidated. Um, they've also retested how well they apply the paint to the vehicle, um, which is called transfer efficiency, how well they spray the paint on the car.
Um, the more that goes on the car, the less that goes out, so that's or goes into the filtration system or has to get burned. So we want better transfer efficiency, right?
Yeah, they had improved transfer efficiency for the clear coat uh portion, which means more gets on the car, more gets into the oven, which gets into the concentrator and the oxidizer for abatement. Um, so those were, those have all been checked and validated. Um, and so that, those efficiencies that they've determined through testing uh in accordance with record keeping will tell us what the emissions are at the plant.
Yeah, I know that can sometimes be a complicated process, so I want to make sure we talked about the um control equipment. And when Bob's talking about control equipment, he's talking really about things that reduce any pollutants that are being released into the outdoor air, being released in places where people are. Um.
Oh, in in terms of the odors, I believe there was a component of the question about the odors. Um, those have been kind of more associated um from those in the community around the MAC assembly plant. Um, we haven't had any complaints from the Jefferson North area um from residents that have been living uh downwind from the plant in that vicinity. So most of them have been at the MAC assembly um north of this Jefferson North Assembly Plant.
Yeah, and and that's a good point. So if folks are experiencing odors from the Jefferson North part of the plant or the MAC plant, either one, um, definitely let us know that. We appreciate a call or an email or or there we have an online forum, whatever way you want to let us know about that. And we can um pass how to do that forward as well. Um. So I'm just want to look through here and see if there's any other questions. There's a question about future um build-outs or future projects for this facility. So since we are not the company, I don't, we wouldn't really be able to speak to that. But it could be, you know, a good question potentially for um when the company comes to talk to the city, which I know they do occasionally, that they could respond to or answer. Um, so the question was, how does this affect the re- the findings and future emissions? So I'm not really sure what you were referring to. Future emissions should be going down. I mean, that's what we want them to do for sure. Um, which is why we're kind of entering into this enforcement process to make sure that this is all legally binding and the company is required to do these things. Um, this question is, I just want to check our time, make sure we're watching what we're doing here to just be respectful of everyone's time tonight. So this is probably going to be our last question. So if we didn't get to your question, I apologize. Um, we'll try to get back to everybody who, there's just a few questions that um we've kind of mentioned that were a little bit outside of our wheelhouse here. So um, this question is, the VOC measurements that are reported from Stellantis, are they measured by Stellantis or an independent entity? So I know, Bob, when we're looking at these kind of larger permits, there's a lot of different aspects of that. There's definitely that self-reported portion. There's the testing portion and things like that. So if you don't mind just kind of talking briefly, you mentioned testing a few times. So are you talking about stack testing that a company comes in to do? What kind of things are, you know, and would an inspector observe? If you can just lay that out. I know I'm asking you to do a lot in a minute or or two, but if you wouldn't mind doing that, I think that would be helpful for us.
Sure. So Stellantis or FCA uh typically hires a third-party testing or consulting firm to come out and verify that the equipment is performing um as they expected or as it improved. Um, that company is required to submit a test plan to us. They go over this, the testing protocols, how they're going to test, when they're going to test. And then we respond to them whether we approve those test protocols or not. We've, we've reviewed those. We've approved those test protocols. And then for the day of the task, we come out and we observe the test. We observe that the company's following the protocols that they said they were. Um, we make sure the production is at a high enough and adequate level that they're running plant operations normally. Um, and then within sixty days after that, they are required to submit the test results to us, which we then, again, go back. We review the results, we verify the math and make sure that the calculations were done correctly and that they're um used in the compliance calculations at the plant.
Yeah, so those test results, when we're talking about stack testing, those are the one, they're written by the third party. Um, a lot of times they're given to the facility to then give to us, but those are, that kind of testing is done by a third party. And and one of, you know, one of the things just to emphasize with that is it's another way for us to have those checks and balances to make sure that the company is being held accountable to the emission limits that they have in their permit. So it's a really important tool that we have in the permit. The, you know, self-reporting is also important. You know, when Bob does his inspections, he double-checks everything that they're telling us. So it's not like we just take their word for it and put it in a file folder and don't look at it. You know, that's how these violations were found in the first place. So um, there's a lot of different things that go into a facility like this when it comes to inspections, testing, um, and then potential violations, things like that. So again, thank you everybody so much for um all the questions. This was really a great conversation. I appreciate people letting us know that they had questions. And we're going to move into the comment portion. So Bob and Erin, thank you so much for being on with us tonight. I want to go over just a, just a little bit about comments in general before we move into the actual hearing portion. So a lot of times what we end up hearing is, you know, what should I be commenting about or what, you know, what's okay to comment about? Um, so we welcome comments of a- of any type. You are, we're happy to take whatever you want to let us know about. But um comments related to the consent order, how the consent order was written, what regulations are included, um, how the the conditions in the consent order are set up. Those kinds of things are going to have the greatest impact or in the outcome on the action itself. So comments about specific changes that you think should be in there are going to be very effective. So like just, this is a very simple example, but if you, your comment was, you should fix all your typos. Uh, that's not as effective as, you you know, you're missing a comma here and a period here. I know that's very simplified, but just as, you know, a quick example. Um, comments that are outside the scope, the scope of the proposed order, um, those can't lead to changes in the final order if it's approved. So eh, like I said, we'll take comments on anything, but if you want a comment that might affect what's written in the order, um, then you're going to want to, you know, make sure that it's something that we can look at. So things like traffic, zoning, noise. I know we had some conversations today about, you know, would they be able to have future projects? Um, we might get comments or we do sometimes, like, don't allow them to build anymore. So that's something that's handled by the city. You know, that's their approval process. Eh, it's a little bit outside of the state's authority to do that. So um, if you have a comment that you're thinking of giving and you want to know if it's something that fits in here or not, we know, we're happy to talk about that too. And like I mentioned before, this isn't the only opportunity that you have to give us your comments on this action. So um, if you want to think about it again, feel free to do that. If you're ready to make your comments tonight, you know, we're definitely happy to take those. That's why we're here. So um, without me talking more, I'm gonna, you're gonna have to hear me for just a couple more minutes here in order to officially open the hearing. I do have to read a hearing statement. So Annette, we're going to get right into this hearing. So if you want to get ready for your part, like I said, Annette is going to be listening in as a decision maker to any comments that folks might have tonight. So um, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like I said before, my name is Jennifer Dixon and I am with the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, or Eagle. I will be serving as a hearing officer for this public hearing on the proposed administrative consent order for FCA US LLC Stellantis, um, the Jefferson North Assembly Plant in Detroit, Michigan, here and after referred to as J-NAP. Annette Switzer, Division Director of Eagle's Air Quality Division, is the decision maker for this administrative consent order. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impacts on human health and the environment. The law governing these responsibilities is Part Fifty-Five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to allow anyone interested in the proposed consent order to provide information the Air Quality Division can use in deciding whether to approve the consent order as written or if there are additional issues to be considered. So please recognize that we can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria we must use in making decisions. So for example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within our authority. Some of you may want to express your support or opposition to the proposed consent order. We're happy to make note of your position, but please understand that we are by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the enforcement action. Please note the proposed terms of the consent order are brought to you tonight in the form of a proposed agreement. This does not mean a decision has already been made. Instead, it reflects an initial agreement, including the foul, including following a compliance plan, paying a monetary penalty, and they must agree to pay additional penalties if compliance is not maintained. Everything in the proposed consent order remains open for comment and further consideration by the division. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on the proposed consent order. The public comment period for the proposed consent order will end at midnight on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Additional information can be submitted until then and it will be considered when we make a decision. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality-related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the consent order will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may reject the consent order, approve as drafted, or approve with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions, if any, have been changed in the final consent order and the reasons for those changes. In all three scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended either the informational session or public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. So as stated previously, you may submit a comment at any time by mail or email. You may also type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment and writing tonight. If you don't want me to read your comment out loud, please state, do not read, otherwise I will read it out loud. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We will limit your comment time to three minutes. I will do my best to address commenters in the order your hands were raised, but please bear with us as the technology does have a little bit of challenges with that. Please recognize department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed consent order and to listen to those comments. So thank you so much for your attention and I'll now begin calling names of those who stated they wish to make a comment. So when you registered for the meeting, there was a few people that stated they would like to make a comment tonight. So we're going to call those names first, but if you would like to make a comment and you didn't previously let us know that, uh, you can go ahead and raise your hand after I call these first three names. So the first names are Senator Stephanie Chang's or her office, Tamika Nobles and Kelly Allen. So if you are on tonight, if you can just go ahead and use that raise hand icon to raise your hand. So as a reminder, you can use um that raise hand icon or you can type pound two into your phone if you are a caller and it will raise your hand for us. So those names again were Senator Stephanie Chang or her office, uh, Tamika Nobles or Kelly Allen. All right, Senator Chang, hold on one second. You should be good to unmute yourself and go ahead whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. Um, hi, everyone, and thank you so much for holding this public hearing. Um, always really important to make sure that residents have a chance to hear what's happening and give their thoughts. Um, so I did have a few comments. Um, one is, you know, I know, a- and you heard earlier from residents who really are looking for some more help in the community with the various impacts on their public health and quality of life. Um, you know, I know that right now this proposed consent order doesn't include a supplemental environmental project or any anything, you know, directly benefiting the community. So I would really urge both Stellantis and Eagle to consider some type of supplemental environmental project that dedicates funding for, say, for example, air purification systems for homes um or other types of quality of life home improvements. I know that Councilmember Johnson has really been pushing on this issue as well. Um, so if that could be considered, I think that, you know, you've heard from residents over many years about the impact of um, these two facilities. I know we're talking about one specifically, but the pair of facilities and the impact on their their health. Um, and if we can really help to address people's health issues by directly improving the air within their homes, I think that would go a long way. Um, the second comment that I had was just that I know in the proposed consent order, there is a piece around Stellantis creating an emissions mitigation plan, but only if they exceed the VOC limit in the future. Uh, I would really request that um that it's an immediate requirement, that they should just have an emissions mitigation plan. Um, and that's something that we should be able to see and understand and know what their plan is. And I hope, you know, that that is something that can take place, um, rather than waiting for them to be over the limit again. They should just have a plan for how they're going to mitigate. Um, and I think that's really important, especially knowing all of the public health impacts. Um, my third comment is really more so for the community. You know, I know there were some questions about where does the money go that the uh company will be paying uh in terms of the fine? Um, unfortunately, as mentioned, the money does go to the state's general fund. Um, unfortunately, as mentioned, the money does go to the state's general fund. Um, which basically means that it can go towards pretty much anything. Um, you know, the general fund is many, many, uh, billions of dollars total goes to a lot of different things. Um, but what I have been pushing for basically my entire time in the legislature. Um, is to dedicate the fines that are paid. Uh, for air quality violations to go into an air quality enforcement and mitigation fund. Um, to come back to the communities that are impacted by the pollution. Um, in the form of air monitors or health impact assessments or buffers or. Other types of quality of life improvements through the form of grants. Um, and so I do have a bill that has been making its way through the legislature, it passed the senate and is. Passed the House Committee and is in the full house right now. Um, so eager to make sure that we get that done, because if we can do that, then. Instead of seeing that eighty-four thousand go into the general fund and not knowing that it's gonna come back to the community. We could actually make sure that it goes back to the community in the form of grants to really help residents. Um, and so if you have any questions about that, please don't hesitate to reach out to my office because. I've been on a lot of public hearings for consent orders. Uh, over my past nine years as a state legislator and have heard from so many residents on the east side and southwest Detroit, you know, down river. That it doesn't make any sense for this money to go to the general fund. It really should go back to the communities that are harmed by the pollution. Where there has been a air quality violation. So unfortunately, the law has not changed, but. That is not due to any lack of trying on my part and many of my colleagues. So we're gonna keep pushing hard to get that bill passed. Um, and signed into law. Uh, but thank you again Eagle for holding this hearing. Um, and thank you to all the residents who have participated. Uh, your voices are really, really important and uh, it's good to hear all of you share your concerns. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you Senator Chang, appreciate your comment tonight. Uh, the next person that I have with their hand raised is Eden Bloom. Eden, if you don't mind, just. Identifying yourself or introducing yourself, I guess, in any association you might have before you make your comment.
Yes, can I be heard?
You sure can.
Okay, my apologies. I, I am driving and. I was unable to hear the rest of the meeting because my daughter had a doctor's appointment. Uh, but I just got out and I was uh, pleased to see that I was able to make a comment. I will be brief. Uh, I've expressed my uh, views about this entire process uh, at length before. Uh, in regards to the Mac Assembly Plant, uh, my family and I. Uh, live in the impact area of this project. Uh, my question and my comment has to do with specifically the public funding of this project. As far as I've been able to document, the uh, Detroit Assembly Complex, that is both J-NAP and Mac Avenue Assembly have. Accessed or requested access to over four hundred and twenty-three million dollars. In tax resources and these resources will be taken. Uh, some of them from our public schools are being taken from our public schools and our libraries. Uh, for thirty-five years from the time this deal was made. Um, so my question for Eagle, my question for the state of Michigan, for Stellantis, the city of Detroit and anybody who cares. Is, when are we going to consider doing clawbacks on Stellantis over these tax. Abatements, over these incentives, over this money, the public funds that we have given them, when they continue to. Violate our air quality and threaten our public health. Um, we are funding and paying for some of our residents' own demise and I'm frankly sick of it. I would like direct answers in the response to the public comment as to what it will take. To, to clawbacks on Stellantis for these violations for how they are harming Detroiters. And when y'all are gonna step up and do that. I'd like that to be answered. I do appreciate it and you all know, I, 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 uh. I come with respect, but you know, it's, this has been a long time. Residents have been dealing with this for quite some time and. This, this stuff doesn't answer any of the concerns. You've heard it over and over again. It's a, that's a little fine. It's not enough. Doesn't go where it needs to go, so on and so forth. Um, let's take, let's take the money back. Let's take the money back. When can we take the money back? Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you Eagle, thank you state of Michigan, thank anybody who might care.
Thank you Eden, we do appreciate your comment. So I don't have anyone else with their hand raised at this point. Um, so I'm gonna just give you guys just a minute or so, couple minutes here to see if you wanna make a comment tonight. Again. Not required to make a comment tonight. We'll go over the other ways that you can let us know what you think about this, um, in just a couple minutes, once the. Actual hearing is closed out. Okay, so hold on one second. Alright Rhonda, if you don't mind, just before you make your comment, if you could just introduce yourself and let us know any affiliations that you might have. Otherwise, you can go ahead whenever you're ready.
Yes, hi, my name is Rhonda Sanders Adams and I'm with the ECAC, uh, Eastside Community Network. Eastside Community Action Coalition and this is Men in Women's Social Club of Detroit. Um, I wanted to find out, were there any emphasis or recurring pestilence on the site considered in the air quality?
So just to remind you, we can't, we're not responding to questions at this time. This is just for the comment period. So yeah, I'm happy to have you. State your questions as a comment and then we can get back to you on those, but we won't be able to respond to you right now.
Okay, sorry about that there.
No problem.
I guess, I thought that would be very interesting to see, uh, what was the uh, pestilence, uh, you know. Was there any recurring things going there? That's all.
Okay, that sounds good. Yeah, thank you so much for putting that in as a comment and we'll be able to get back to you, um, after the. Um, comment period's over on that. Anyone else who would like to make a comment on the enforcement action tonight? Well, just like I said, we'll give you a. Couple minutes here to do that before we just close the hearing out. Alright, hold on one second. Alright, John, if you would go ahead and just introduce yourself and then any affiliations before you make your comment and go ahead whenever you're ready.
Hey, yes, so I just joined here. Uh, my name is, uh, well, Patrick Ridley, uh, that's the wrong person. Um, I just joined a chat here. Uh, and I am just wondering, uh, will the link to, to, to this meeting be posted anywhere?
Yeah, we, we are recording it and we will post the uh, recording and we will also share it with you because you have attended the meeting. Did you have a comment that you wanted to put in?
No, 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 no comment, no comment. I just wanna uh, be able to uh, review this here. Thank you.
Sounds good. Yep. Anyone else that would like to make a comment tonight? So just as a reminder, if you are calling in, it's just that pound two on your phone would raise your hand. Alright, Mr. Schob, hold on one second. Uh, you should be able to unmute yourself and then go ahead and start your comment. Uh, make sure you introduce yourself if you don't mind before you get started.
My name is Robert Schob, I'm in the impact. Area. I tried to ask the question before now, but I guess I'll make a statement about this uh, process here. I, um, I'm not in agreement with basically. Uh, the way things have been ran as far as the way Eagle does thing and how you make decisions and stuff. I asked a question in the questions earlier and the question was. When are you guys gonna put the community before the corporations? I understand you've got policies and different things in place or whatever. But it's time to step forward on that. We need to make a change and, um. I'm sure there's other issues beyond the VOCs, but that's what we're talking about. But I wanna make this statement and I'm gonna leave you guys alone for a minute. The next statement is, I've heard you guys say over and over again, you have no ability to shut down a corporation. Two things, if you can answer it down the line after this meeting or whatever. First off, why don't you have that ability? And second off, other than it being something that, um, was monumental, just obvious. Why isn't that if they violate a permit? Because I also read in some of your literature that if they violate a permit. That violates it right there and that, and like with them messing up here and you not acknowledging or knowledge. Having the knowledge of them running VOCs out here, that's a violation of a permit. I thought they weren't supposed to be able to operate period. With a violation like that. And that's all I got to say. I mean, I, I know this ain't the proper form, but I wanted to. Put this out there since I didn't get my question answered when I tried it.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Schob, and I apologize for that. I didn't see a question for you, but you know, we're happy to talk to you about the other things that you brought up. Uh, later as well. Um, okay, so this person, the last four digits of their phone eh, are nine zero two zero. So if that is you, please go ahead and introduce yourself, um, and then go ahead and make your comment whenever you're ready.
Yeah, can I be heard?
Yep, we, you sure can.
Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Uh, my name is Roshan Harris. I am the uh, advisor. Um, for advocacy and uh, power building at ECN, Eastside Community Network and the uh, Eastside Climate Action Coalition. Um, I just wanna echo the sentiments of a lot of the folks, um, who spoke in this evening. And, and really emphasize, you know, the reason we have a government. Is to be in service and, and to protect the people, the public. Um, that's your number one job. Um, the reason why any of these agencies or regulatory agencies. Are created is to make sure that the public safety is always at the forefront. Uh, folks go to work every day, they pay taxes, whether they go to work or, or, or not every day, doesn't really matter. That they're paying taxes into a system that should be keeping them safe. And right now, based on the reflections of the folks in, in the community and the folks, um, that have, you know, addressed many things, um, that they've had issues with. Uh, regarding the Stellantis plant and, and all of the, you know, contaminants that are entering the air and soil and, and everything that's really harming the community. Uh, it just seems like there is a, 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 a lack of emphasis on enforcement. That is, uh, number one, keeping people safe and then repairing the harm that is done. And I think that we really need to be emphatic about, you know, like I said, making sure that families are safe, individuals are safe. Because that should be at the forefront of any government regulatory agency, uh, that is ensuring that that public safety is first and foremost. And, and taking an approach, uh, legally that will allow us to, to get to that finish line of people being protected, people being served. And people having the things that they need. And so, um, like I say, we, we implore you as a community to, to do, you know, what you should do and that keep us safe. And so, uh, we're here to, as a organization, the Eastside Community Network. Eastside Climate Action Coalition to work with you guys to find solutions. We're, we're available. We're here to collect data with you. Uh, and, and, and try to find out what's the solution that's gonna help keep people safe. And it still seems to be, uh, the same old, same old. So. I, I stand with the people and say that we really would like to see more enforcement and real enforcement and real reparations. For the damage and the harm that's currently been done, um, and, and that harm that's been done, you know, leading up to now and, and making sure that. Number, uh, number one, that there's no future harm, um, that can continue to be done to this community, which is already, um, being subjected to such, such harm. So, uh, I will, uh. See the rest of my time in my comments and thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Yeah, thank you so much for making your comment tonight. Uh, the next person that I have with their hand raised, the last four digits of their phone number are seven one five six. So if that is you, you should be able to, um, just introduce yourself and then speak your comment when you're ready.
Yes, I'm Jocelyn Harris. I am Chair of the District Four Community Advisory Council. A resident of Jeff Chalmers, that was, the line was drawn that, uh, said that we're not in the. Impacted area here, over here in Jeff Chalmers, but looking at the whole process, it's so sad. That we have to continue as a community to react. When I sat in the seat with other residents. As a decision was being made to put, give this plant opportunity to put a paint factory in the middle of a residential. Community. So now what's happening is that we're in only a position of having to react. We have very few safeguards, it seems, from our state agencies because everything is siloed. If I had a question that I could ask, is where is, and where is, uh, it details? How this process really should work. Because from the point that this, uh, paint factory was put in a residential area. There certainly should have been, uh, out. And I'm hearing some of the residents clearly saying that we need a clawback. This is causing harm to the health of the community and it is very dangerous. It's given too much power to the, uh, fact, to Stellantis who's profiting from being in that plant. And not enough protocol to protect, to protect our community. And so my statement is. The only thing that we can do at this point is learn from a bad experience so it won't be repeated in our neighborhoods. And we're going to put our elected officials on notice that community need to be at the forefront. Of every decision that is made. And we should no longer have these silo approaches from state government. They have no intention. It's very obvious of protecting the residents. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. If we have a bad experience, let's learn from the community. But our elected officials, we are holding you accountable. For putting measures in place to keep our community safe and that is not happening.
Thank you very much for putting your comment out there tonight. So that was the last comment, the last person that I had with their hand raised at this time. I'll give you. Guys a couple minutes, just in case anybody else would like to make a comment tonight. I'm not, I'm not seeing any other hands raised. Are you okay with closing the meeting down right now?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, yeah, thank you for everybody. Those were great comments. Um, I have to read an official statement to close out the hearing and then we'll just have a couple other things to go over before we kind of. Close everything out for tonight. So I just wanna thank you all for your comments and cooperation tonight. We did really appreciate your interest. In the proposed consent order as well as the time that you took to be here. So. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period ends on January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period. And anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. The hearing is now closed. Okay, so just a couple other things, let's skip past this next slide, cause it's just how to raise your hand. We already did that. Um, a couple other things really quickly, like we talked about earlier. Um, tonight wasn't the only time that you can submit your comments. You can submit your comments, um, anytime up till midnight on the twenty-third of January. Can feel free to just, you know, write your comments on a piece of paper, type it, print it, send it in. Write it on a napkin. We'll take them any way you want, if you wanna send them in by mail. I'm gonna just read that address out loud because we do have so many folks that are calling in tonight. Um, and that address is Eagle, so E-G-L-E. AQD, so that's for the air quality division. And the address is P O Box three zero two six zero. And it's Lansing, Michigan. And then that zip code is four eight nine zero nine. If you do have access to email, you can send an email comment to Erin that you heard from tonight. And her email address is her last name, so that's M as in Mary, O as in octopus, R as in red, A as in apple. N as in Nancy, and then E as an elephant, or Erin. Um, and that's at Michigan, all spelled out. Dot gov as in government. So Moran E at Michigan dot gov. Uh, if you wanna find. More information or a link to even be able to submit a comment, you can look on our public notice page. So it's just Michigan. Um, all spelled out dot gov and then all one word is Eagle Air Public Notice. So just remember Eagle is E-G-L-E. And you'll find, uh, information about this uh, enforcement action and anything else that we have that's open for comment. So. What will you find on that page? You'll find the proposed enforcement summary. So that's a little bit about like what we talked about tonight. So kind of a high level look at. What this enforcement case was all about. Um, the enforcement summary report and the draft consent order. So if you're interested in looking at. The specific things that are gonna be written in that, um, enforcement action, that proposed enforcement action. That's what you're gonna wanna look at. That's gonna lay everything out in a little bit more detail. We'll also post the link to the meeting recordings, but you all as attendees, if you have a valid email address, we'll send that to you. Um, you can also find information about the Stellantis facilities in general in Michigan. At Michigan dot gov, um, slash Eagle Stellantis and Eagle Stellantis is all one word. So. On that page, you can find links to all of the violation notices, the inspection reports, those test reports that Bob talked about. There'll be information about that. Um, staff is a great resource if you need to get ahold of us. So. We talked about talking to Erin if you have questions about this enforcement action. Um, April Wendling is our district supervisor in Detroit. So a lot of times if you have a complaint. Um, or you have questions about inspections, she's an easier person to get ahold of. Um, and her email address is Wendling A, so it's W E. N as in Nancy, D as in dog, L as in. I don't know what L is in, L. Sorry, I as in igloo, N as in Nancy, G as in go, and then the letter A is an apple. And then that's at Michigan dot gov as well. Um, feel free to give her a call. That her number is three one three. Five eight eight zero zero three seven. So that'll get to the office there in Detroit. Um, they're the ones that typically respond to any order complaints or things like that. Uh, so again, we really wanna thank you for joining us tonight. We, this, um, hearing, like I said, is recording. Is recorded. Um, we will get the hearing transcribed. We post it on YouTube. It will be available for anybody who, you know, is interested. There's also past Stellantis meetings that are on our YouTube channel as well. So, um, once you get this one, if you're interested in any of those other ones. Um, some folks are. So, uh, we really do appreciate your time tonight. I know folks have a lot of other things that they probably would have rather been doing. Than spending the time with us, but we appreciate you taking that time. So Caitlin, whenever you're ready, if you wanna go ahead and end the meeting, I would appreciate that as well. Thanks, everybody.